Thank you, Dr. Dear and all of your board. I appreciate this opportunity. I never planned on standing before you until Mr. Jim Cottrell called me the night before he passed away, asking me to help him in the endeavors that he was seeking to do. And I want you to know, I don't take this lightly. Yes, I've been involved for years, going to cat board meetings, calculating, figuring out how the taxes work, how everything works, reading the Texas state law, everything that goes into property taxes evaluation, how the AORB board works, and my responsibilities. So my wife and I perfectly felt the Lord's guidance. And he said, Peter, I want you to do it, she supports me. Now let me tell you what I stand for: equity, equality. I remember listening to this sweet lady about here, she was worried about her property taxes. Let me tell you one of the deficits, deficiencies in the tax laws. If you realize there's hundreds and thousands of people who are not even paying taxes. We found forty, just to start with, that their property taxes have not gone up in ten years. Now, I don't know how that would affect you, but let's see. If they're equal, now if they get them to pay their taxes, who does that help? The schools. Now let me tell you, I'm all for schools. As you read in my bio, if I didn't like schools, why would I have raised 1.3 million for the teachers in Cleveron ISD where I live? I love teachers. Now, I'll tell you, I am sad, and I'm sure you are sad equally, and I'll end on this, that your teachers have not gotten the praise breaks. And it's okay for me to be sad, because I love teachers. And I hope whatever happens, when I'm on this cat board, I will help to fairness and equality. And I don't set your rate, you set your rate. But I promise you, I'll be honest and do what is correct and right to help the schools and the citizens of this community. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Fidel. I'm also from Cleveron. I live in Johnson County, actually, in the ETJ, just outside Cleveron, on the southeast side. Former trustees, served three terms with Cleveron. Master trustee, graduate of leadership at CASBE 2018. I've served on their Regional Eleven grassroots committee, basically dominated me among the nine representatives that we have in Regional Eleven now to the legislative advisory council for CASBE. And I think we're probably all in volun agreement that property taxes are difficult for all of us. School finance is certainly difficult. Teachers and staff are probably the most important, but least or most underpaid, undercompensated professionals on the planet. I'd like to see that change. The time I've spent with CASBE in Austin has been focused on that. Enrollment-based financing would be a nice start. I made little progress on that last time for the spent folks. But frankly, I believe that we need a fruit basket turnover reform with school finance in Texas. It's just not working. It has never worked, and each year it becomes more and more burdensome for our taxpayers. So that's my goal. The reason for wanting to serve on the board here is further my understanding. I'd like to see it from all sides. I've seen it from the district side, I've spent some time on it, trying to understand it from the state perspective. At the end of the day, here in Johnson County, we have to do what we have to do. It's pretty much prescribed by law. The real change is going to come from changing Austin and change in the way that we appreciate for our class public education. So with that, appreciate your nomination and reach out with questions.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
All right, next we have recognition.
So we're excited. Been a while since the fall, but these girls are involved in a lot of different activities, so we finally get to recognize our regional semifinalist volleyball team tonight. Super proud of these ladies. Yeah, we're honored to talk to you. If you don't know, we had a little change on the coaching this year. Coach Carter stepped in for us for this year on an interim tag, did a great job. He was the head coach, he loved it. He has decided that's not what he wants to continue doing for his career and goal path, so we love him and appreciate him, but he did an amazing job for us at the last minute, you know, in the summer. Unfortunately, he could not be here tonight, so Coach Blue, his assistant, is going to step in and talk about this team a little bit, and then we'll recognize them.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you guys for attending. This time to recognize the girls, we truly appreciate you guys coming out. So after graduating this year, some key players from the 2023 season, we actually only had four front row returning players for this season. So when Coach Carter came in, he was thrown into the mix. There was definitely a lot of questions, like what were we going to do? How was it going to work? How were we going to work into each position for each girl? We had a lot of talent that came up and did a fantastic job in filling this season. So during the month of August is very, very tiring. It's a lot of time that volleyball players put in. We competed into three tournaments. We had Wimberly, Harpersville, and we also host our own Lady Cat Classic tournament here. It's a pretty hard, tough schedule, lots of games are played during that time, but it allows us definitely time to see what the girls can do, work with different rotations, and put girls in the best positions for the season as they go on. So our preseason scheduling was definitely challenging for us. We had a lot of really great teams, and we had a lot of time to find ourselves becoming a unit. But the competition that we went against was very, very top-notch. During September and October, we're really good guys. We cruised through district, winning the 12-4A championship. So we won district championships in our district. And then after our postseason, this is where we beat the first round, Dallas Pinkston, and then in our second round against Van Alstee. And then we went straight into our third round, falling to Pleasant Grove as the regional semifinals. So we finished up our season overall, was our record was 26 wins and 15 losses. So overall, our team accolades was the UIL District 12-4A Championships, UIL 4A by district champions for Division Two, and then UIL 4A Division Two, excuse me, area championships. As individual accolades, 15 of our 16 athletes made Academic All-District, which is amazing. Our girls are very talented, not only on the court, but also in the classroom. They are very smart. Three athletes were honorable mention for All-District. Three athletes were second-team All-District. Three athletes were first-team All-District. One athlete, which was Lila Hyner, earned district superlatives. Six of our athletes were named All-Johnson County Team. Three athletes were named to our Academic All-State. And one athlete was our TGCA All-State. So for over, Carter has been in here for over the past 20 years. He's coached multiple sports at various levels. This team was the most selfless group of ladies that he ever coached. They were fun, respectful, and just an overall joy to be around. They dedicated their time, energy, and focus to the 2024 season. They were completely invested in the goals that they had set and accomplished each of those. This team not only carried out the Lady Cat volleyball tradition of excellence, they raised the bar for future Lady Cats. He'd like to say thank you for being here today and thank you for allowing him to be a part of something that was truly special. And I as well, thank you for being here. So this is the Lady Girls, our 2024 Lady Cat volleyball team. We have Lila Hyner, Peyton Brinkley, Kennedy Gonzalez, Peyton Wilcox, Abigail Lee, Peyton Bauer, Hallie Brewer, and Breanna Brewer. The rest of the girls are not able to attend tonight, but we do appreciate my ones that were here. So if we could give a big round of applause one more time for all of you.
Cross-country boys, go ahead and line up over there. Super excited to recognize our cross-country boys team for the first time this year. I'm sure Coach Hill will talk about it, but this is the first time in Class 4A that the boys' cross-country team has made it to regionals. So super excited for our cross-country boys this year. And I want to thank Coach Hill for all the things he does for these boys, coaching basketball, golf, and cross-country. He stays plenty busy, but I will turn it over to him and say thank you for all the work he did for the cross-country boys.
Okay, I'm totally Coach Blue, so I got to raise this up. We did not wear matching shirts. That's kind of what guys do, they show up and do their own thing, so apologize for that. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our school board, thank our booster club, and thank our administration, and thank our parents for supporting these young men. It takes a lot of people to support them, not just being around, but it's also financially, and just coming to meets, and I want to thank you guys for that. We've got a lot of support here, and I really appreciate that. I'd also like to thank CC's Pizza for feeding these guys after every cross-country meet. So that was kind of, so when I first took over cross-country, my second year here, we didn't have that, our guys program wasn't that large. And so I told everybody, help to get out of school, you go hang out with girls from other schools, and I'll feed you CC's pizza, and I've done that at every single meet. At the end of the year, we're totally, we're absolutely just tired of CC's pizza. Coach Ogul is my assistant coach. He's got baseball stuff going out. He's not here, but I want to say thank you to him as well. And I want to also say thanks to my wife. Just because of the time it takes to run a program. These boys train in the morning and also after school. To be competitive, you've got to put a lot of miles in, and some of these guys are putting in about 40, 40-plus miles a week. And to do that, you've got to run a whole lot. So we come in the mornings, and we're on the track at 6:30. We run for 45 minutes for the weight room. And they come back after school. If you're coming in after school, you'll see us kind of get together from the school. They go run anywhere to five to eight miles, depending on if they're freshmen or upperclassmen. So they put a lot of miles in, so I really appreciate these guys and their dedication. So to kind of talk about the season, last year, we won one meet last year. And Coach McFarland used to be the boys' coach, and it got passed over to me. And he said he can't remember the last time the boys won a meet, and so we're really excited about that. And then this year, we won three meets this year, which you run eight meets plus district. So that's a big accomplishment. And one of the meets was a King meet. So I used to be at King, I was a cross-country coach there forever, and for 21 years, actually. And when I took the job here, I wanted to make sure sometime we'd be at King meet, and we won the King meet this year, so that was awesome. So proud of those guys. So like Mr. Flood said, the last time boys that qualified for the regional meet was in 2011, and this is the first time they've qualified for the regional meet since we've moved to 4A. So that's been well over 10 years. Our goal next year is to win district. We've got a lot of our guys back. We do have a couple of seniors, but looking forward to the opportunity to hopefully win district next year. So historically, this is the first time since moving to 4A, these guys have qualified for the regional cross-country meet, and that's awesome. Okay, we'll recognize these young guys. Freshman Jackson Hill, he's a hill with hair. Freshman Jonah Wood. Freshman Lyndon Mill. Sophomore Brayden Bradley. Sophomore Si Teneri. We have sophomore Sean Ward, he's actually playing soccer now. He's in a soccer game outside, so he's not going to be here for the recognition. We have junior Angel Montalvo, he's out of town with the three-day weekend, and so he's not here to be recognized. And we have another junior, Cameron Rosser. And then we have two seniors, Mr. Jones, Ryan Jones. And Ryan and Wyatt, Wyatt's not here, I'll explain that in a second, but Ryan and Wyatt actually run Red Cross Country all four years for me. Freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year. So it's really hard to get seniors to come out and run, and I really appreciate that. Ryan and Jonah were second-team All-District, so if you're six through 10, you're considered second-team All-District. And then Si Teneri was a top five, he was first-team All-District. Our last runner, Wyatt Cheek, he's actually not here, he is actually in the military. So he got through school early, and he's now in the military. Yes. So again, thanks, guys. Thank you, parents, for your support. Thank you, guys, for your hard work. Appreciate you, guys, and look forward to next year. Thank you.
We have the resolution first, and then our poster contest winners. So, good evening, Board President and Board Members. Dr. Dear, each February, schools across the nation declare February as CTE Month, Career Technical Education Month, where we celebrate the accomplishments of our CTE students and teachers. Man, do we have a lot to celebrate here in Godly ISD. Just a few of those things. Our FFA teams competed in LDE's Leadership Development Events in the fall. They survived talk show season and thrived at so many different locations. They're currently entering in CDE Career Development Event Season. Our TAFI, our Texas Association of Future Educators, are currently at state right now, so we're, have our fingers crossed that they come back with some great results. Our Health Occupation, our hostess students, had students qualify for state this year. Technology Student Association, Arise Drones, Best Robotics, all competed. And one of the things I'm maybe most excited about is we had our first film ever enter into the UIL Film Festival. And we don't know what place we are yet, but we know that we are in the top 10 of the 4A class across the state. So Ms. Peyton Frederick has done great things with our kids in our audio/video program. Beyond just competing, we have students partnering with local real estate agents, filming drone footage for them. Our Shop the Wild program and our entrepreneurship. Students are forward-facing with their student enterprise, partnering with our elementary PTOs, our athletic booster program. They are creating t-shirts for our basketball students, for our theater students. They have partnerships all across the district and our community. Wild Williams has been creating flowers like crazy. They just did the Exchange Jets program on this past weekend. Our ILEAD students are partnering with our IT programs in repairing our Chromebooks and our One to the World Initiative. Fun fact about them, last year we repaired about 900 Chromebooks. It cost the district about $16,000 in parts to repair those Chromebooks. Before we had this student program, we were outsourcing those repairs to a third party. And if we had outsourced those 900 repairs last year, it would have cost the district over $80,000. So we are saving the district a very large chunk of money by allowing our students to process those Chromebooks and repair them in district. But even more valuable to me is the experience that they get while doing it, earning those world credentials and that life experience in customer service. You know, this is my favorite thing to talk about, and I could go on and on and on, but I'm going to stick to my script and end there. So tonight, you will have, in your consent to Jenna, approval of the resolution declaring February as CTE Month. And I'm going to read that for you real quick right now. Whereas February 1st, 2025, or 28th, 2025 has been designated as Career Technical Education Month to honor students who have chosen to pursue career technical education, and as where as career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness, and where students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And where as Career Technical Education Month provides students with career exploration opportunities early in their educational experiences, enabling them to make informed, beneficial decisions about their academic coursework. Whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gap, CT-related fields including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, cybersecurity, and information technology. Whereas Career Technical Education requires students for these and other fulfilling careers, offering integrative programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education that lead to attainment of industry-based recognized credentials. And whereas Career Technical Education programs ensure that employers have access to high-qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring America is strong and competitive in the economy. And it will read now therefore, Icrick Stevenson, School Board President, of Godly ISD, do hereby proclaim February 1st through 28th as Career Technical Education Month in Godly ISD. So we appreciate your support as the board in helping to facilitate and foster those learning environments for our students, and we want to celebrate all of our students who participate in those programs. As a part of that, we also have our Pre-K to Professionals Initiative, where we encourage students pre-K all the way through 12th grade to think about what it is that they want to be when they grow up, and they dream and idea about that. And this year, our students drew themselves around the theme, "I'm wild about my future as," and yes, we played on the term "wild" with our new building across the way, the wild. And they submitted posters to their campuses, and their campuses picked the top three. And then we had an industry panel who selected winners from every grade level. So a special thank you to Stacia Black with ACS Bank, Tara Roden with Roman Real Estate, Ms. Terry Goodlow from Service First Mortgage, and Haley Fraser from Godly Nutrition. And they served as our judges this year, and I'm sure Ms. Goodlow can attest that they were sweating bullets in there, trying to pick winners from each of these grade levels. So those partnerships are key to us being successful in the programs that we deliver. So let's talk about our winners. Let's see if... There we go. So we're going to have our students go line up with this block. First off is our pre-K winner, Adeline. Ms. Adeline wants to be a worship rock star. Next up is our kindergarten honorable mention, Ms. Maylin. Maylin wants to be a firefighter. Kindergarten winner is Ms. Cooper. Cooper wants to be a music teacher. First grade honorable mention is Harper from Legacy. Harper wants to be an artist. First grade winner is Britley. Britley wants to be a veterinarian. Second grade honorable mention is Ryland. Ryland wants to be a baseball player. Jason Asher, we might have to talk about that. Second grade winner is Weston. Weston wants to work in landscaping. Third grade honorable mention is Lillian. Lillian wants to be a ballerina. We couldn't pick just one runner-up for third grade, so also honorable mention for third grade is Jackson. Jackson wants to be a soldier. Our third grade winner is Ella. She wants to be a marine biologist. Fourth grade honorable mention is Fisher. Fisher wants to be a baseball player. Our fourth grade winner is Ezekiel. Ezekiel wants to be an architect. Fifth grade honorable mention is London. London wants to be a veterinarian. Also a tie for honorable mention with fifth grade, Tanner. Tanner wants to be a race car driver. First place for fifth grade is Maxine. Maxine wants to be a volleyball player. Sixth grade honorable mention is Natalia. She wants to be an artist. Sixth grade winner is Mila, as an animator. Seventh grade winner is Margaret, as a fashion designer. And the seventh grade winner is Thamena, as an illustrator. Congratulations to all of these students in their bag. They have an LED trophy. Maybe? They'll light up, and they can use that as a not-light, and as a recognition of their award at home. So congratulations.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the campus spotlight. Ms. Bigson?
Okay, Marty gave me permission to move this, so... All right. Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for allowing us time this evening to talk about one of my favorite places in Godly, and that is RB Godly Elementary. And we're going to start first with recognition of our ambassadors that were able to be present this evening. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Howard. Ms. Howard is our counselor. And she's new to campus this year, so I'm glad that you're getting to meet her and see her face. And she's going to tell you about the ambassadors. These are our ambassadors, and they help all... Sorry. Okay, these are our ambassadors, and they help lead the student body. They're leaders in the classroom, and they also help with like snack sales and helping with the value brands, and they just do a lot on our campus. So I'm going to start with Grace Alexander. Melanie Barstow. Paisley Black. Bayana Johnson. Grantley Redman. Emery Salasberry. And Megan Lee.
That was as of last week. It also does not include any new referrals for special education or five oh four in that number. So that was as of last week where we stand with population breakdowns. This year, we continue our learning of fundamental five, supporting that district initiative on campus within our classrooms. And we include the elements of fundamental five in our teacher walkthroughs and in our PLC discussions. We also brought in a book study for our campus called Ten Mindframes for Visible Learning. It's by John Hattie and another author, and it really helps teachers learn and focus on all the data that can be collected, not just formal data but informal as well, and how to take those bite-sized pieces of data and make them useful to the teacher and useful to the student. So that's, we have been practicing that. You guys know we implemented the data dashboard, so this is in support of that to get that thinking in motion and those conversations happening. And I spoke on this a little bit last, last month when I presented for singling. But we do have some updates. So Honor Choir this year is still going, but I wanted to point out that we had nineteen students last year and it has grown to twenty-six students, which is very exciting. Mr. S. works very, very hard on that, so super fun. And I think he has a performance scheduled for May. We also started a yearbook club this year. So ten fifth graders are in that club. They do the same club for the whole year versus switching at semester like the other students do. And it's fifth grade students, but it's a first grade teacher running it. So we have some, some cross-community happening there in the building. And then we have a new club started this spring, the Theater Club, and I spoke on that last time as well. But, excuse me. What that is, is some students came and met with me and they wanted, they asked, they advocated for themselves to have this club. And so their goal is to put on a performance by the end of the semester. We're excited to see that come to life. We have continued with houses this year, enrichment clubs, and as we saw this evening, ambassadors. Our campus academic goals are listed here. They are the same ones that I have signaled on for this entire year, for the school year. Ninety percent of students will have expected growth in literacy and numeracy. That's in support of the district goal that was set for all of the campuses, so that's why it's listed there. Increase rigor by focusing on teaching and assessing the verb in the focused teak. And then increase our performance growth for our sped students by ten percent. Currently at an average of fifty percent approaching or higher. And I want to say, because I know there's been a little bit of confusion there, targeting the special ed student population doesn't mean that we're not targeting the whole school. So just roughly, I got some numbers together. So last year, for the whole school, all students tested on reading. Forty out of two hundred and one students did not meet approaches, so they were below. That includes special education students in that number. And then math was sixty, sixty out of two hundred and one. So by targeting that special ed population, I'm expecting to increase the whole school performance. But I do have to look at sub-populations as part of being in ESF, and it's also part of the game that you play with the state. So I just want to point that out. It's not that we aren't trying to grow and we aren't paying attention to data from other students. And about data. So I wanted to show you guys just a little snippet of, obviously there are no student names or any data really entered there. That's just a fake blank one for you guys to kind of see what we're looking at, the color coding. We're looking for data, you know, abnormalities, and we're looking for consistency across data. We use math and M-class to forecast and gather data throughout the year. And we also do a campus benchmark test. So we do that, we're doing that right now. You might have seen it on our calendar, where we shut down and we do a practice just like STAR so that our students know what the day feels like, the teachers know what the day feels like, and we get data from that too to help us predict how, how things are gonna go. So we're tracking it all year. And obviously, if something comes up that, that isn't measuring up, we address it through PLC. Oh, I'm missing a slide. There it is, okay. And then just to kind of keep you in the loop of where my vision is and what we're doing next with data. So the next steps for us next year will be to put this in the hands of our kids and really focus on goal-setting and them understanding their strengths and what they're, where they're, where they're great, and then also working on their weaknesses. Not walking around saying like, "I'm bad at math, that's a weakness." That's not what I mean, but like, "Maybe I need to get better at my multiplication facts." And them knowing that, I think will empower them to continue to improve. So we're gonna put the data in the hands of the students next year. We're already doing this in reading really well. We need to do it in math. We need better systems in place to do this in math. So that will be our target next year. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Dixon? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Target Improvement Plan, a public hearing for that. Ms. Cott?
Yes, good afternoon, good evening, board. And I am presenting to you our targeted improvement plan. And we brought this to you, sorry, I have... There we go. And we brought this to you last February, and we presented last year's tip. And so this is just a refresher and kind of an update on what we're doing. I did want to kind of bring you a little bit more information just to make sure everyone understands what the tip is and what the information is in this. But hopefully, this is the last time we have to do this because it is a two-year process. So once we were in, we were in for two years, and then if things keep on track, we'll be out after this year. So just wanted to give you a little bit of information. So this is a state and federal program. It's only for schools that are Title I campuses, which makes it federal. But it is through the Texas Education Agency based on the STAR test, which makes it a state guideline. So it kind of goes hand in hand. It is both state and federal plan that places us on this. And it looks specifically at the closing the gap domain, which is domain three. And I'm gonna dig in a little bit more to explain what domain three is. But what happens, what, what indicates for a campus to be on the comprehensive support and improvement list is they take any Title I school, they look at the scaled score, and then they have a cut score. And if you fall below the cut score, you're on the list. And once you're on, as I said, you're on for two years. So RB Godly is a Title I school, and they did fall below two years ago, the cut score. And so that placed them on the list. So what does that mean? So this is the, the target that we're looking for. The domain two has several areas where you can earn points. And those points are then turned from a raw score to a scale score. If I could explain how that happens, I would, but I cannot. It is a big math mix-up. But as you can see, in 2023, we earned zero points. And so our scale score was a thirty, and the cut score was forty-six. So we fell below that forty-six number, which put us on the list. And I'm gonna explain to you part of the reason that happened on the next slide. But as you can see, this past year in 2024, our raw score was thirty-two. So we went from zero to thirty-two, which brought our scale score up from thirty to sixty-nine. The cut score for last year was fifty-six, so we were above the cut score. So we would not have been on the list last year. These are some of the areas that they look at in domain two. The first one is academic achievement. That is just looking at students performing at the meets level on STAR. And so you can earn points if enough students earn meets on STAR and you earn, meet the target there. The second one is academic growth. This is the part of the STAR test that we are the most focused on. This was a change that was made a few years ago in accountability, where they started watching students that were making progress. And so you can earn points if students are showing growth. So we're gonna look at that very closely. And then the student success score is based on STAR performance, and you can see that formula there. They take the percent at approaches plus one point one times the percent at meets, plus one point two times the percent at masters, and divide that by three. Easy enough, right? So that's the student success score. And then again, there's a target, and if you meet that target, you earn points. So, and the way you earn points, if you make no growth and you don't meet the target, you get zero points. If you make some growth, you get one point. If you make growth but don't quite hit the target, you can earn two points by following that math problem up there. If you hit the target, you get three points. And if you hit the long-term target, which is for 2037 and beyond, you can get four points. There's a lot going on here. There's a lot to explain. But for the most part, I want to show you that one point is if you make some progress from the year before, and three points is if you hit the target. That's the most important thing to focus on here. So I took about six charts and I cut them up. And I tried to make this as easy as possible to show you the progress of where we were. So if you look at the very top line there in the purple, you'll notice that we have no scores for 2022. That was the year that we opened the new campuses and all of us realigned. And so RB Godly did not have test scores in 2022 because that campus didn't exist as it stands today. So even though they made progress in 2023, there was no chance of them earning even one point because they didn't have scores in 2022. That's what put us on the list because we couldn't earn a single point unless we hit the target. So there was nowhere for us to show growth from 2022 to 2023 because there were no scores. The same for Pleasant View and all of our campuses, kind of in that same boat. So that is what got us onto the list in the first place. Because even where we did make progress, there was nothing to compare us to. And so we just started at zero in the areas that we did, that we did grow. So in 2022, you have no, you can see that there's no growth there. 2023, there were several areas we did not hit the target. We knew we had areas to work on, we knew we had things to focus on. 2024, you can see, we did make growth. And this specific one is looking at the academic achievement scores. And so this is students that were at the meets level. And so you can see, all students is an area where we're measured. Hispanic students is an area where we're measured. White is a student, white students is an area we're measured. And then high focus, that means any student that has multiple areas. They could be an emergent bilingual student, they could be a student who is low in free reduced lunch, it could be special education. So a student that has multiple markers, that way they don't come up in like seven different areas. They may, they're gonna be in all students, they're gonna be in Hispanic or white, and then they're gonna be in high focus. Many, many, many of our students fall into all three of those categories. So if one student doesn't pass a test, that hits us three times. Because that's how the, the categories work. So where you see, we did make progress in all students. We made, we went from forty-three to forty-four percent passing. We didn't hit the target, but we did show growth, so we earned one point there. So on, on this category, you can see we earned one point on all students, three points on the Hispanic population. They did meet the goal, they hit the target, and so we earned three points there for reading. In math, they had progress, so we earned one point. So you can see here, we did make some progress in the academic achievement in students earning meets or above on math and reading. The next one is our academic growth. I did not cut it up for you, I just wanted to kind of give it to you as we see it. Again, you'll see, 2022 is there at the bottom, there's no scores for 2022. So there was no growth to be made from 22 to 23. But you can see from 23 to 24, in reading, we hit the target in almost in every single area. All students, Hispanic, white, and high focus, we met the target and we got three, six, nine, twelve points. So that shows we are on target. Our students are making progress in reading, they are growing. In math, we hit a couple of our targets and we missed a couple of our targets. We made progress in high focus, but we did miss our white population didn't quite make the target there. But we, we did make some growth in several areas. And so this is the academic growth. We earned seventeen points out of a possible thirty-two. So that is significant considering the year before we had zero points here. The next area I want to show you is our, is student success. I did want to point out one thing in this, on this category. So this is overall performance on STAR. How many students were at approaches, meets, and masters? This campus grew nine percent from 2022 to 2023. So if you look at the number of students that were tested, they had a nine percent growth. That is a significant number of new students coming in to the campus. And many of those students are coming to us from out of state, California, Colorado. So a lot of times, we're having students come in and this first time they've ever seen a STAR test is this year. So although you may see that we had some areas where our numbers, our percentages went down, we actually had more students pass the test, we just had more students taking the test. So it doesn't necessarily mean that we're not making progress. It's just the numbers are growing so quickly that we're trying to keep up with the growth and the progress and students coming in from all over the country and trying to get up to speed on STAR. So that is significant. And typically, when we look at growth on STAR, anything three percentage points on either direction is considered maintenance. There's a statistical standard deviation of three percent that if you go up or down three percent, that's maintaining for the most part. So, so on the student success part, again, here, you can see we earned some points in some areas and in other areas we did not, but we did earn three points here. So overall, we are making progress. We're showing growth and we are meeting our targets in several areas. So I tell you all of that to say, that's how we earned ourselves onto the comprehensive list, and this is how we are earning our way off of the list. So as a school that was identified for comprehensive support, these are the things that we're required to do. We did them all last year and again this year. Engaging in the Effective Schools Framework. We had a diagnostic visit last year, and we're gonna see a little bit of that today. Some of the things that she came and she saw the strengths that we have in place and areas where she suggested that we needed to continue working. Putting a campus intervention team in place. We have a district team. Mr. Carnes is our district lead for that. And then I'm on it, on the committee as well as Ms. Dixon. And then she has an instructional leadership team on her campus that she works with. Having the, engaging in the touchpoints with the agency. And Ms. Dixon will tell you about the, the coaching sessions that she's had with the service center. We've had calls with Texas Education Agency to make sure that they're on the same page, they know what we're working towards. Dr. Dear has been on the calls with us. Creating the improvement plan, which is what I'm sharing with you today. And then getting approval for that plan from the board, which we're doing tonight. And then submitting that to the state just for them to continue to maintain that we're taking care of all of these checkmarks. So what is the Effective Schools Framework? As a, as a state, they went and looked at schools that were successful across the state. And there was a several-year-long research study to see what do schools that are successful do. And there was a several year long research study to see what does schools that are successful do? What are some things that they all do consistently and routinely that makes them successful? And they created a list of five levers or five things that they see consistently happening. And then that's what drives the effective schools framework. So it says, if you do these five things consistently and regularly throughout the school year, your school should be successful as well. So that's what the state uses as the guiding force for this whole process. They have us look over all the information and then choose one area to focus on at a time and then we work through. So that is what the effective schools framework is and why we use it. So we did, as I said, we had a diagnostic visit last year. We had Randy Ann McCowen. She came from the service center. She spent an entire day with us. She went and watched classrooms. She met with teacher focused groups. She met with the administrative focus group. And she brought us some feedback, some things that she saw that we were doing well and that we were very successful at and some other areas where she suggested we make some changes. And then you're going to see those, those pieces have all been put in place this year. So the areas in green, you'll see the teachers and the focus group said, we have quite a bit of professional development. We have time dedicated every year, but it's not necessarily content specific. So this year, when we made our plan, we have our teachers meet by content, by grade level. And they do look ahead protocol planning every month. And they're very specific in their contents and they're working together planning for not just general instruction, but content focused instruction. So that was a suggestion that they made for the campus, but we put it in place for the entire district. As well as job embedded, we do students entered coaching, not just at RB Godley, but on all of our campuses. That was something that we wanted to put in place so that teachers are having that job embedded instruction or professional development. They're working with their facilitators and they're working through coaching cycles. So we have that in place. The PLCs were started last year. They were just starting the process of doing PLCs, but they weren't necessarily focusing on data and having those effective conversations about data last year. So that's something we focused on this year. And as you've heard Ms. Dixon speak about multiple times, data is very much at the center of their professional learning communities this year. It's just a process of getting all the pieces in place. And so I just wanted to share some things that last year she commented on and you're already seeing in place for this year. So last year, the lever that Ms. Dixon and her team selected was identifying roles and responsibilities. She had, she was a relatively new principal last year. She was in her second year. She had a new assistant principal. And so they really decided to focus on the roles and responsibilities of all the people in their administrative team and their instructional leadership team. They did some, what is it called?
Yep, you can do this.
I'm going to let her talk about this.
So this was something that Randy Ann had brought, Randy Ann Cowden from the service center had brought to my, to my attention, a tool to use to identify strengths and weaknesses within your entire team. You may think you know yourself or even your teammates and like what you're really good at and what you should delegate to someone else. But it's the Deloitte Business Chemistry Test. You can go online, look it up. It's free. We didn't spend any money on it. We did it in our office just to see who's, who's what? What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? Please don't let us have any square without a name in it. So it was, it was good to see where we're heavy and where we're light. It was great conversation with our team, which led to, okay, what are our roles and responsibilities? Who's in charge of what? If somebody says I need help with this, who, who is the, who's the lead person on that? That doesn't mean that we don't all pitch in and all do all the things. We do, but we can't always do all the things. So who is the lead? It was really interesting to hear what people thought other people did. And so we're in the middle of that still of consolidating that list and making it usable for staff. So that's where we are in the process with our instructional leadership team and that particular lever. So this year, as you've heard me say 1,252 times, we are focusing on data. So where it's in our PLCs, it's in the look ahead planning. All the things that we're doing are revolving around that. We've implemented the data dashboard. We're going to keep talking about it. We're not at 100% I think really using it the way that it's intended to be, but we are getting there and we are adding that, putting data in the hands of students next year. We also were able to hire a third inclusion teacher, which helps, I'm just going to keep talking, which helped ease the case management load of our other two teachers. Again, to focus on that subpopulation that I've been bringing to your attention. And then I have also been receiving, well, I've had, I've had my first one-on-one coaching session with Randy Ann Cowden from the service center. She comes in and meets with me, goes through data with me, any, any things that I'm struggling with or anything I want to make improvements on. She's a great sounding board, but she coaches me up and helps me get better. So that's that.
So as Ms. Dixon mentioned, so we have our coaching cycles that we've, she's been working through. And then we also had our meeting with Texas Education Agency, Dr. Dear, Mr. Carnes. And we've all met with them. We've shared our plan with them. We've had approval from the agency to say, yep, sounds like you're on the right track. And we're seeing the progress that we expect of you. So those are the areas of support we're getting from the region service center and from the state. So how do we get off the list? So the criteria for being off the list is that you have a higher closing the gap score than when you were first identified. So as I shared, when we were identified, we were at a 30. Right now we're at a 69. We anticipate being even higher this year. So as long as we are at a higher score than we were when we were put on the list and we're above the cut score. Last year, the cut score was 56. I don't anticipate it being anything higher than 60, 65, which we would have been above that anyway. So I have no doubt that if we continue the trends that we've been seeing, that we will be above the cut score and higher than we were put on, than when we were put on the list. So we should be rolling off that comprehensive improvement list this year. So our big questions. I keep skipping a slide. So I was just going to have Mr. Carnes come up and talk to you a little bit about how we're still trying to strike that balance between STAR and C-BASS. And then gather feedback from you all about how we do that and continue to strike that balance.
Howdy. That's a lot and it's complicated. It's complex. You see a lot of those formulas and hearsay. Yeah, we made a lot of growth, but we've got no credit for it. Like, you know, that, that stings. So, but they're doing great things. And so I want to commend Dr. Toddle, Ms. Grimsley, Ms. Dixon, Ms. McCollie and the whole RBG staff. They're doing amazing work. But in that closing the gaps, obviously we had a deficiency. And then the thing that we talked about with community-based accountability is, okay, we're going to deal with, we're going to address it head on. We recognize it. They're doing a lot of good things, a lot of good things, but we have some things that we need to address. And so we're not running from it. In fact, with community-based accountability, we talk about that, that we're running towards more accountability. And so with that, the struggle for us is the balance. Now I went, you know, and I, I pulled it up in here. I pulled it up in here and going back to last year and this year in our community report, our parent survey, parents indicated on the list of things that they care about, STAR and state and federal accountability was dead last. Safety, character and leadership, those things were at the top of their list. But according to the state of Texas, STAR is here. It's inverted, if you will. And so that's the struggle for us as educators is to find and strike that balance. Of it's important. We don't want to be on any lists. We want to take care of business. And so then, so we continue to ask that question is, how do we strive towards balance between STAR and C-BASS? Because we've stated for a long time, we don't want to come in and day one and through day 170, do STAR prep and test prep. And you know, that's, that just hasn't been what we value, as shown here. But it is a data point. It is a piece that we have to, that we have to do and we want to do it well. So we're not, we're not saying that we don't. In fact, in the pillar student learning and progress, STAR gets a whole page for all of our passing rates compared to the state. And there are things that we're doing about the same. There's things that we're doing better and there's things that we gotta work on. We, we recognize that and we're addressing that. Our team, part of our responsibility is to continue to talk about that and address it. And how do we improve? But how do we also stay true to what makes Godly Godly, right? And so communicating growth and then talking with our teachers. We had our district improvement committee meeting last week. And we talked with, with everyone in that committee to say, hey, tell us, what are your thoughts? And it's a struggle for all of them as well in that, that was the same thing, the same. They want to keep that godly feel, but nobody wants to be on any lists of any kind. And so communication was a big piece. Our elementary teachers talking about ERLA and M-class and all of these different things. And so communicating with families was a key piece of that. More than a global or corporate communication, that if local level, if you will, meet teacher meetings and student-led conferences and those things. And understand what we're working on and what we're working towards. Were valuable pieces of what we're trying to do. And so the, they struggle with it too, because they don't want to be test centric and test, 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 star, 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 star. But we also want to, to achieve that balance. So it's something we're continuing to talk about. We'll always be talking about and we'll address it and work through it and continue to be held accountable for it. But also balancing that with what's important to us. So we just wanted to make sure that y'all know that we're, we're, we're keeping it in here. We're keeping it a piece of what we're doing. And, and so, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Any questions or any recommendations? This is the first, the public hearing part, and then we'll come back for approval later in the meeting. But if you had any questions or any, any of the, oh, we would be more than willing to take that. I don't want it.
I had a quick question, Dr. Toddle. I could have missed it, but in the, in where we were dropping below, below, they were measuring on growth. It sounded like you referenced a complicated formula. I'm assuming it's some kind of algorithm. Do we know the specific like key metrics that are in that algorithm that we could focus on?
So yes and no. We, we know what is being measured. As I said, there are, there are some pieces of like how they get from a 30 to a 69. Don't know. That's a math measure. They will tell you all the math, but they're truly, they keep a lot of that behind the curtain. But when we are looking at how do we, how do we achieve success? We are digging down to individual students. I know Ms. Dixon has a list of eight students that are, they're hitting on all the categories. And if these students move backwards a little bit, they're going to, they're going to hit us on this list. But if they move forward, we're in good shape. So we definitely are looking to the individual student, the individual test. And we are identifying students that are maybe very close to the bubble between meets and masters or between approaches and meets. And if they go backwards, then that's going to be, that's going to hit us on the list because it won't show growth. As far as the individual, like the metrics of how the test is scored? No, we don't know that. We just know the kids have to perform on these areas and we have to keep moving forward on the standards that we know are tested.
Based on, on some of the data that you had showed, it looks like it's kind of heavily like demographic influence. Is that?
Yes.
Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Are, are any of the things that we're learning and implementing at this campus being integrated at any of the other campuses? I know that we weren't on the list at the other campuses, but are we picking up some things that Region 11 or in some of these one-on-one coaching sessions? Are we sharing that information with our other campuses so that we can maybe improve in other places as well?
Yes, almost everything that we've implemented at RB Godley, we've done across the district. The look ahead protocol and the individual content level, professional development across the district. Students that are coaching across the district. We've shared, I know this year Ms. Duckett is a brand new principal. And so we've shared with her some of the roles and responsibilities and how to define that. So yes, we meet with all of the principals twice a month. We meet with just elementary and then we do with just secondary. And so we definitely, they share a lot and anything that we get from the service center, we share it with everyone. But I would say most of the things that we put in place because of going through this, we've done across the district.
Yes. Would it be safe to assume that we could easily see district-wide improvement from the things that we've implemented?
Absolutely. I would anticipate that, yes.
Any other questions?
Okay, I will be back in a few minutes to make my recommendation whenever it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you very much. Next we have superintendent representative.
All right, we've got a construction update. Wade with S and P.
How you, how you doing? Right now we're down to about three punch list items. We have some other subsequent lists that have just come in, working on those. That brings us back up to about 80 items. We're knocking those down as we go. We're going to do an 11-month walk next month project. Try to find out some of those items to close out a lot of them. And we're working on training. Last of the training will be done the first week of March.
What are the three punch list items? You said there's three punch list items?
One of them is the screens. One of them is a motor in the welding shop. One of the fans we had to go through, it burned out, they changed it. We had to, they upsizing the motor to try to deal with the amp bridge on the motor for the electrical.
The third one? Screens, motor in the welding shop and?
I think it is part of with the TV studio.
Can you confirm that, Nikki?
It's hard for me to know which three he's got. His model is the?
The AB?
Yeah.
So is it the three on the punch list and then the others, the warranty list? The AB on the warranty, is that?
Warrant you asked me, there's other lists that we received from Nikki, from the kitchen and some part of our annual walk that they've done. We got, that brings it back up to the, right around 80, 90 items.
So I just want to make sure I heard you. Sorry, the 80 items on a list is called an 11-month list?
That's, 11-month walk is, is at the next month. Right now, these are lists that Nikki and different groups come up with and they'll send them to us. We keep adding them in there, trying to knock out all these items.
But 11 months in, we still have over 80. Is that what I was trying to say?
Yes.
Okay.
So just one clarification there is that our warranty period started in April of 24. So we are getting close in that 11-month period. Is our 11-month walk would be in March, again, 11 months from when the warranty started. So that's a pretty substantial number of items. So I guess I would follow up with a question there. Do you currently foresee being able to close out the 80 items before the warranty period completes?
The items we have now, we should be pretty close to doing this. But we will have, you know, once we do the 11-month walk, which I believe some of the items we have now, you know, it's a static ceiling tile. They have some leaks or something on the drains and mechanical, there's dripping on the tile. So we've got to go change those. Those are the items we're dealing with. As they come up, stains on the ceiling tiles, we'll go up and add and fix those items.
Do you have a status on the big screen at the end of the football field and the motor in that?
I do. That we might have to get with Kell.
Good thing is we've got, Dr. Dix is very thorough. And the good thing about having that many items on the warranty list is once they're on the warranty list, they're on the list. We don't have to wait about, those don't expire at the end of the one year. When the, when we get there, they're on the list. So S and P really loves how.
S and P really loves how thorough Dr. Nix is.
I think my concern is the timeliness of how those items on that list are being taken care of. If it is just a ceiling tile, that should be, unless we're dealing with some sort of supply issue, that should be easily knocked off the list. Like, I would think that if there's 20 or 40 of those types of items, that list by the time you come here next month should be at least half the amount list.
Yes, I agree.
Looking forward to it.
And some of them are coming up as we go. We'll go fix one and then there's another one somewhere else. So it, it's just a, some, some of it's insulation, some of it's dealing with different items that are leaking. Uh, some of these things have pumps on them that pumps are, you know, they, they're with service on them. They've got to be cleaned up. If not, then the water will start dripping, so we'll go, we'll go and clean that up and work on those items.
How many people are on your team that are attacking these items?
Uh, with S and P, we have two. But we've got an office staff, a project manager, and Caleb who's off-site. And then we've got, uh, different groups coming in at all times.
So it's mostly subs that are completing these tasks?
Any other questions for Wade? Thank you, Wade. Nikki, do you have anything?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next we've got the annual report on, the chat committee, go ahead, Mr. Hahn.
David, um, we had our, this is our report for yearly, uh, yearly report to the board. It's informational. We had four meetings this year. I just tried to summarize kind of the high points of those meetings. Um, we did a lot of discussion this year, a lot of review, and then hoping next year we're to tackle a project or two. We talked about maybe doing something with summer feeding and stuff like that for next year. But this year, we just reviewed and went over some things and I put all that in the yearly report for you and for your review.
Any other questions for Mr. Hahn?
Are you having better attendance and participation this year than we had in the last year? Or is it about the same?
We've had a quorum every meeting. Just much better.
That was very diplomatic. I liked it.
I have a moment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hahn.
Thank you, guys.
Spencer, give us first discussion on, on budget, '25, '26, already talking about.
All right, good evening, Board. Uh, just wanted to talk through a couple of basic items. Initial expectations, so we are in a legislative session cycle. What does that mean for us? And that is really dependent on what the legislature does. And so my plan is to bring to you in all of our discussions multiple options. So options with increased ADA support through the basic allotment, increased, uh, or excuse me, a decrease in tax revenue due to the homestead exemption, any potential items for teacher raises, et cetera. So just wanted you to be aware that we are on top of this and, and we are gonna bring multiple options to you so that when something does become law or when it's signed, we can pivot to that and already have a plan in place. Uh, the other piece to this is the appraisal. So this will be the first year that we are in the three-year appraisal cycle. And so we don't know what that's going to look like for us. Um, we know that there's increased new money for new bills, there's increases in commercials. But how does that look on the opposite side with the increase in, uh, the, the homestead gap? Uh, the homestead cap, excuse me. Uh, that'll be something that we get on April 25th from, from the counties. And then looking at additional FTEs. And so we've talked last month how, um, my initial recommendation is we're not going to, to have any FTEs in discussions preliminarily with the administrative staff. And then also looking at the special populations that, that we have coming up. There is a potential, uh, that we are going to need to add some. And so we're looking at how we can do that at a net zero gain so that we can kind of move some money around from one area to the other. That way we can capitalize, uh, on getting the, the support for the students. All right, so speaking of taxes, I just wanted to go through potentially what we're having to look at when it comes to the appraisal versus no appraisal. So this is based off of the, the appraisals from the certified values from the 2024 year and looking at what, uh, that would give us in tax revenue. And so, uh, oh, and excuse me, I'll get to that one in a second, sorry. This one, this one is talking about the basic allotment. So, uh, basic allotment, so there's a lot of talk whether it's gonna be an increase to the basic allotment or if it's gonna be an increase in enrollment-based funding. Um, either of them, uh, on a $300 basis or on an enrollment basis are pretty much the same for us. And so if it goes to enrollment, we get an additional about 1.3, 1.4 million. If we get an additional 300 in the basic allotment, we get an additional 1.4 million into our budget potentially. And so what that would look like is just off of a base, we have 235 teachers, um, 279 hourly staff, and then 107 other professional staff. So when we take it out, if I just look at teachers alone, um, teachers would get potentially, we would bring to you for consideration, a $3,000 plus raise, also giving additional money to the other staff as well. Again, this is really dependent on getting additional funding from the state. So as you can see, if the state gives us more funding, um, that will allow us to potentially give more to our teachers and staff as well as hire more staff to support them and students. And so, uh, just wanted to kind of show you what that preliminarily would look like. And so this would be one scenario. Uh, the other scenario would be an increased amount. The other scenario might be an enrollment-based, et cetera. And so, um, I'll continue to, to keep you up to date on these. So, uh, again, uh, the preliminarily conservative route that I'm gonna go is to make sure that we're not gonna put the cart before the horse. And so if something does happen and it does get voted through, um, we want to make sure that it's signed on by the governor before we plan to implement because we don't want to have money that we're, um, planning on having, but then we end up not getting. And so, uh, I just wanted to make sure that not only is it sustainable for this year, but what does it look like in the '26, '27 year and '27, '28 year? And so, um, constantly looking at, yes, we can afford it this year, but can we afford it in three years down the line? Uh, we are planning on a balanced budget for the '25, '26 year. Um, and speaking of that, I know a discussion, um, that we need to potentially look at is there is a budget workshop scheduled for June 9th. Um, but it has come to my attention that we might want to have one in May as well so y'all can have some additional insight. And so, um, I, I'm welcome that. So whatever y'all decide as a board to have, I'd be more than happy to, to get that for you. There we go. So it did, it skipped one. I thought, I thought it was in order. Um, so let me go back to this one real quick. So this is based off of the, the frozen appraisals, um, or the average growth. And so, uh, the maximum compressor rate, MCR, is our tier-one rate. So that's the one we have to levy at 100% to receive 100% of funding from the state. If there are, uh, if there is no growth in appraisals and it is under the state growth as well as the statutorily required 2.5% growth that goes into the calculations for compression, then we would essentially stay at the current floor that we're at. Um, that floor, the 61.69 cents, there are over 548 other school districts in the state of Texas that are at the floor. Um, there's 1,013 districts in the entire state. So that means over 57% of all the districts in the state of Texas are at the floor, um, rate. Conversely, there are only 72 districts that are at the highest MCR rate. So when you're seeing, um, news as far as potential legislation compressing the rate 3 cents or compressing the rate 6 cents, remember that's based on the highest amount. And so essentially that gets cut in half for us. Um, the appropriations bill right now that's in there is a 3%, or excuse me, a 3-cent reduction. For us, it would be a 1.5 cent, uh, reduction. And so again, if we were normally growing at our 8% and, um, we received that due to compression, we would actually be able to bring to you as a board to compress an additional 3.5, uh, excuse me, 3.2 cents. And so, uh, the, what we're kind of looking at is based on how much growth that we see or do not see is dependent on the tier-one tax rate that we can recommend to you, um, as a board to adopt. And then also just to note there that, uh, since 2019, since HV3 came into existence, the tier-one rate started at a dollar. Um, it's now 41 and a half cents lower than it was about six years ago. So that's just kind of the, the basic outline of, of what we're looking at. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Spencer.
Thank you, Spencer. Walking through, again, a cursory look.
I have a quick question. Um, do you have any kind of indication of our percentage in growth?
As far as our tax roll?
Yeah.
So the, last year, we had about 130 million of new money growth, uh, which was about 2% of what the entire growth was. And if you remember, we were right at, um, 7.98% of growth, uh, on the tax roll. The statutorily required compression is 2.5%. And so if we have the same percent of new money, then we wouldn't have any, uh, potential compression there. And so it would be a, a 2%, 2.5% growth. Um, I'm planning on a, about a 5% growth, just to be conservative on, on the state, state values. Uh, and then I'm planning on a 2% growth for our local tax values. So kind of, um, making sure that we're covered on both ends.
Thank you. Next, uh, on the agenda is public participation. Uh, at this time, we extend the opportunity for public participation portion of the meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. Uh, I have a number of individuals that are signed up. Public participation provides the general public the opportunity to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Persons attending the meeting, um, have already signed up. Uh, each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation. Personal attacks on district employees by name or position or students are not allowed. Um, all participants are expected to speak with respect and civility and maintain a calm, professional demeanor. Um, we will have the clock up, uh, upon the expiration of the three minutes. I'll call the next person signed up to speak. Uh, note that the Open Meeting Act does not require the board to respond to any comments or complaints from a member of the public regarding the agenda item. Um, at this time, uh, Faith, do we have the, we have the clock ready? Um, and first is Ms. Olson. And I guess I'm gonna go ahead and ask the next person, Ms. Miller. Be ready to, uh, to go when Ms. Olson is done. Uh, Ms. Olson is identified, agenda item 9D.
Sorry, I'm running out of time, so if you could share, um... So, um, the information that I'm passing out, I emailed each of you today and then a whole bunch more information as well. Um, I realize that, um, you guys didn't have much time to take a look at that. I thought that our board meeting would be next week, so I apologize. I was not getting information to you in a very timely manner. So, um, just wanted to point out a couple of things about these proposed board operating procedures. Um, sort of like I said last, last, um, month, is we, you guys are a governing body, not a business. And so the constitutional issues that, um, that I bring up are very important. It's the fabric of our society, our free society, our republic. And, you know, we know the principles of those who fail to learn from history are bound to repeat it. And Ronald Reagan said, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction." We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on to them to do the same. And one day, we will spend our sunset years telling our children and our children's children what it was once like in the United States where men were free. So I did provide you with some comments, um, on some of the board operating procedures, some things that I observed, some things that I believe are constitutional rights that could possibly be infringed. So I just ask you humbly to please consider, um, the precedent you're setting in terms of free speech and our constitutional rights. And I also provided in your emails, um, there's a couple of books that I, um, referenced, um, that talk about some of the things that have been going on and people in our country who have come from other countries, Czechoslovakia, um, Russia, where our rights, their rights were taken away like a frog in a pot, little bits at a time you don't realize until it's too late. And some examples of other school boards. I've provided links to you guys if you want to review those. And again, I wish I would have realized that we were a week ahead instead of the regular schedule. I would have gotten this to you in a more timely manner. But I just ask you really to think about the precedent you're setting and some of these things that were proposed this evening. So I thank you for your time and, um, and your attention to those things. And I hope these mean some, to you what they mean to me in terms of our republic. Thank you.
Ms. Miller? And next will be Mr. Cooper. If you could come on over this, so this way, please.
Sorry, try.
Uh, agenda item 9D.
Good evening, Dr. Deere and the members of the board. My name is Rhonda Miller. My husband and I just moved here in the fall from Indiana, within Indiana. So this weather's a bit familiar for us. So, um, I did want to tell you that I run an organization called Purple for Parents United, and I observed many, um, different aspects of education in the state of Indiana before moving down here. And I just want to tell you that when I read these policies, some alarm bells did go off for me. And I'm just asking you to take these into consideration, um, because they are very concerning for me as I read through them. First of all, um, the, the code of ethics. It reminded me of a pledge more or less to the board, um, whereas all the board members are elected officials. They represent their constituents. And I realized there needs to be some decorum for board to operate. But it reminded me of, it was more of a pledge that you are a unified, uh, body instead of an individual representative to their constituents. So I would just ask you to take that into consideration when it comes to these code of, code of ethics. And I would, um, also follow up with the whole freedom of speech. Um, that is very concerning, the aspects that are put into this policy as well. Um, and observing, you know, uh, school districts in Indiana, if I may refer to that, I would just say, you know what? They didn't restrict, um, freedom of speech in a way that I see being restricted in these policies. And they also didn't restrict places and designation of where people could audio record or video record a meeting, which I thought was a little interesting that you have a designated spot specifically for that. And then they would also ask, so what determines disruptive behavior? If it's an, an individual constituent or a taxpayer that comes forward and is upset with something that you may have proposed, what constitute disruptive behavior? I mean, we watched some individuals in Indiana were given violations, um, over just asking a question for schoolwork. So I would ask you to consider that. And I would, I would say that's a very serious concerning issue when you're talking about disruptive behavior. What does that constitute? So I would just ask you to consider that going forward. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Cooper. And then he's gonna speak on both 9D and 9E. Um, if you don't mind, hand those to, uh, Ms. Faith and she'll pass them out, uh, both 9D and 9E. And then next will be Mr. Spencer.
Go ahead, sir. Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Talking on Tuesday tonight, the first one is the Central Appraisal District Board of Nomination. First, thank you for, the last one, listening to the people and doing that. I think that was a bold move for you guys. I appreciate it. And it was very, I think that was very solid. I'm giving you some information today that you didn't have before. And the reason is I want you to really pay attention to what the role of the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors is. It has nothing to do with how the school district is run. So on the last page of this document is the specific duties, roles, and responsibilities of the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. So why I'm bringing this to you today is we took this to some other political subdivisions. And if you quickly turn to the third page, you'll see that there's things highlighted there. This shows you a very unique example of one of the systemic problems in Johnson County that we've identified with the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. We found a substantial number of properties, and the list here includes over fifty properties. We stopped at fifty because we needed to stop at another number, where property taxes, appraised values, assessed values, land improvement values have been frozen for ten straight years. Ten straight years. Now, fall within the range of ninety-five to one hundred and five percent, you have to have a balance to that. So the second list of fifty is ones that doubled to triple the number of fifty years. So why am I talking about this today? Because there's one individual that has come here today to speak to you that has been at the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors meetings for many years, every one of them. He's been to numerous appraisal review boards, many of them for many years. He's well involved and well invested in how the Central Appraisal District operates, and he was instrumental in identifying this to where now the Central Appraisal District has gone out and called for a forensic audit of itself. The elected officials did this for themselves so they could get to the bottom of why there is unfair, unequal, inequitable appraisals, which affects the citizens of Godley. Both of these individuals are great individuals and selfless servants, but one is, has been instrumental in making change in the Central Appraisal District and has devoted a substantial amount of time of his own without being elected for many years in learning about it, what it takes, and what, and how to do that piece of it. That should be taken into consideration. Again, the, the roles are on the back page, so make sure that you balance that based on the resumes and the time. So the fit, the, the second thing I want to talk about is the policy and procedures. Since this is an agenda item, which one of the elected trustees made the decision to write these? Okay, so I'm going to take that as none of the elected trustees made a decision to write these. Why would you allow an employee to tell you what to do as an elected official, especially Robert's Rule of Orders? The mayor of Godley or the mayor of any town would never ask the city manager or city secretary to enforce their rules. That's your guys' rule. Please consider that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Spitzer? And he's going to speak on Agenda nine E.
Really, I, I hope you understood that Mr. Cooper was referring to me when he spoke. No, I'm very humbled by his words. I didn't know that he was going to say anything about it. But again, thank you for your time. And let me tell you something, I understand the pressures that you were under. Let me tell you one thing that we instigated on your behalf. Do you realize that your schools in Johnson County received a half million dollar gift this past year? Were you aware of that? Yeah, because the new board, which I work with on the side, lowered Mr. Heskey's budget by five hundred thousand dollars of waste. One example was, they were paying the bank sixty thousand to manage the capital money. Really? Crazy. Now banks want to handle the money and pay the capital. So mismanagement is part of what I'm not happy with. As you try to manage your budget, I want to help you. I'm not here to destroy or hurt in any way. So again, thank you for your time, and I would be honored to represent you. Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Hunneman, and also speaking on Agenda item nine E.
I'm here for two-fold. First of all, last year at the end of the year, I want to thank every one of you for supporting Jim Cockrill. He's a very good friend of mine, and y'all know what happened to him. And, and of course, we had to fill a slot. And Mr. Spitzer, he's been with us the whole time, helping us. And I, I'm a friend of his, and I would just hope that you could see that, you know, let me say the nominating. He's a really good guy. He'll do a great job. He's very dedicated. And that's all I really have tonight, but I really want to thank every one of you for what you did last year. That's it.
Thank you. All right, at this time, seven thirty-nine, we're going to take a six-minute recess. We'll start again at seven forty-five. All right, the time is seven forty-five. We will reconvene. And next on the agenda is the, starting our business items, nine A, the consent agenda. Consider a motion.
I'll motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion by Terry and a second by Krista. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I had a question. So I had a question. I was looking at the fund balance, and I noticed that for this year, we are utilizing five million of fund balance for excess revenues over expenditures. What is the plan to discontinue the practice of relying on the fund balance to cover the expenditures so we can get back to a healthy fund balance?
So my first question would be, what document are you referring to?
It was in the, somewhere around the budget amendment. It was in the consent agenda items. There was a spreadsheet, and it talked about fund balance year over year. And for this year, it said a utilization of five million fund balance.
I'm not aware of any document that has any of that information because it's not accurate.
I'll email you what page number it was in our board book, but it was in the PDF that Faith sent me. And so it was in parentheses, it was a deficit in the fund balance, then it was subtracted from the fund balance for this year. So I'll email you that, a screenshot of that.
Does anyone else have any number that I might be able to get to that?
Did you have any other questions, Ms. White?
Yeah, my other question was, for the audit firm, I know that we're, suggested to utilize Snow Garrett Williams again. My question was, did we do any other comparisons for other audit firms to make sure that we're going with the best firm? And did we do quotes for other audit prices?
Yeah, so we had not gone out for an RFQ for Snow Garrett Williams a few years ago. There was an RFQ done to move it from previous auditor to Snow Garrett Williams. And so based on the prior history with working with them, they're a very, very independent auditor. They hold me and the school district accountable as well as I think an auditor should. An auditor should come in and have full oversight of what you're doing, and it shouldn't be a quote-unquote buddy-buddy relationship. But I have a very great personal, professional relationship working with them. And so I think at this time, that's my recommendation, is to continue going with them.
And then do we have future plans to go out for RFQs?
If that's something that the, the board would want to do in the future, we can definitely look at it. Sometimes when RFQs are done, there are costs associated with that, and so we would want to keep that in mind as well.
And then I found the document in our board book. It was for the-
Okay, can you hold one minute on the, to just finish the thought on the audit firm? Spencer confirmed for me that if we were to make a change, that RFQ would have to be sent somewhere in the fall in order to make the change in a February-ish timeframe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So it would have to be a significant advance, especially making sure that we get on the calendar for the audit team. Now that we're on a June thirtieth year end, everything has to be done before the Thanksgiving holiday. And so, yes, the audit would generally happen in the July or August timeframe. And to be able to get on the list, we would probably want to be on before the start of the year, actually, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you for calibration on that front.
Sorry, I found the document. So it's the construction project fund, and so that is the use of fund balance, was for the construction projects of five million for this year, giving us a fund balance of seven point eight million?
Yeah, so the way that construction works is that we have a bond, and when we go out for a bond, we issue the bond and for the work that is done. And then we utilize the funds that we receive to pay for the construction as it happens. And so this is very typical, and I would say what's done all the time is that you have fund balance left over from the issuance of bonds until the, until the construction is completed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? Just confirming where we are. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. Next, we consider approving the target improvement plan for year two.
This administration would like to recommend the board approve the targeted improvement plan for year two as presented so that it can be submitted to the Texas Education Agency.
I move to approve the targeted improvement plan for year two as presented and recommended. All that good?
A motion by Krista and a second by Marissa. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Next, we'll have the second review and possible adoption of the Tasby Local Policy Update number one two four. Mr. Cars?
So second time here to look at this, and there were, I believe, eight local policies, and most of it was removing designee where, and also that is in BJA local at delegation where, where that is stated. And so they're just removing designee as a redundancy. And then, so catching up with Texas Education Code changes, Texas Administrative Code changes, and, and the changes there that are then put into local policies so that they're reflective of those changes. So there's only eight. I could go through them each individually, or are there any questions?
I just wanted to confirm, I know I had this question last meeting, so it's BJA local that allows the board to do the designee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I wasn't sure what the number was, so thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve or adopt the Tasby Local Policy Update number one two four.
Second.
Having a motion by Terry and a second by Marissa.
Oh, gee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Missed her.
It was a race, and I won that time.
Have a motion by Terry and a second by Simone. Forget the name threat. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Next, we have consider approval of the Godley I Steve Board Next, we have a consider approval of the Godly Eyes deboard operating procedures. So, before I hand it over to Dr. Dear, I do want to just set the stage on this. I know there's been lots of input. We've had several comments last board meeting. We tabled it, just so that we could have additional time to review. I would like to, after we hear the presentation from Dr. Dear, you don't have anything else? Okay, I'd like to treat this as a workshop so that we can walk through individual comments, have opportunity for discussion without the formalities of Robert's Rules of War. Otherwise, I would be restricting to purely two comments as the Robert's Rules are outlined. So, then once we've walked through, then we will, then I'll consider a motion. Any concerns or questions from the board?
So, I know I brought these up last meeting, but just to-
Before we go, any concerns or questions from the board before we get into the dialogue? Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead, Kayla. You had any questions?
Okay, thank you. So I did read my comments last month, and I did email them to Faith, and she distributed them to the board. I did notice that in reviewing the procedures that were given to us at 1:11 PM today, they seem the same as last month's. So it looks like no changes were made from my comments. So, again, I'm not in favor of these procedures as written, as I feel that they severely limit the rights of the public to free speech. Several areas in here, the public comments and meeting the quorum requiring respect and civility. All of these things have been upheld in many Supreme Court cases, including New York Times versus Sullivan. And they have the right to caustic speech. I will tell you that caustic speech is deemed somehow, sometimes intentionally harmful and intentionally critical. So, that speech has been upheld in many Supreme Court cases. And I would just like to see all the board members take that into consideration. I would like to see our district lead the way and champion First Amendment rights in our board meetings and stop the trend of violating those rights and allow the public their freedom of speech. Again, also, the designated areas for the public to sit and stand and record is unnecessarily restrictive. The team of eight language and the pledge requiring consensus for board members, again, leads to taxation without representation. We are individual board members elected by our constituents to represent them. And then, the board focus goals, again, I noticed it was the same, so I would like to see the removal of the language elementary. So we're focused on improving all reading and math in all grades. So I would like to see this document go through a major overhaul.
Kayla?
Yes. Are you looking at the one that just got passed out? Because the elementary has been removed, and they also removed the numbers on the board focus goals so that they're just bulleted, so there's not one that is more, that has, there's no numerical value, so it's not, you know, our prioritized number-one goal. They're just bulleted now?
Okay, thank you for confirming that.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, well, I was trying to compare them out, yeah. Yeah, I was trying to compare. We only had a few hours to compare from last month to this month. It would be my recommendation that we bring this up again next month so that we have proper time to really review these, because we only had a few hours today to look over. So I was using last month's document.
So, that's the reason I want to use a workshop format here, so that we can talk through, I know you had a number of items. Again, a number of these have been, I believe, have been addressed. But let's talk through some of these. I know one of them that you had expressed concern over was the, I believe, the interpretation of consensus. And I believe the words there are really focused on attempting to reach consensus. There's nothing, we are all individuals. There's no expectation that we're always going to agree on everything every time. So, there's times we're not going to achieve consensus. And that's okay, as we have demonstrated numerous times. But, we gotta have a goal. And so I think that is one of the reasons for worrying as it is.
Speaking on that topic, I actually, when Kayla brought that up last week, I agreed with her. And it's, if anybody needs to reference it, it's under the member code of ethics, BDF Local, under honor and conduct, second bullet point. And it says, "I will share my views while working for consensus." We would have to actually change our BDF Local. I would, when I started kind of thinking about that, I thought if we put the word "toward" instead of "for" there, it kind of clarifies that we're not expecting to ever have consensus, but that we are, we're going to be respectful and try to come up with ideas that everybody can get behind if we can, and then agree to respectfully disagree. But if we were to change our BDF Local to read on that bullet point, working toward consensus, Kayla, would you, could you get behind that? Replacing the word "for" with "toward"?
That's certainly better. I just have a problem with the word consensus, because it's the expectation that you're trying to get consensus. And as individual board members, we just won't always have the consensus.
Is the term "get on the same page," is that not professional enough? That's what I use a lot.
I mean, we can even say, "I will share my opinions respectfully" and leave it at that and not have consensus. I understand your thought on the word consensus. However, I mean, I feel like when we've had discussions out here or in closed session, like, I feel, I'm not worried about voicing my opinion. You've heard that, seen that from me, and I don't think you are either. I feel like you're the same type of thinker, as far as that goes. So, just purely hung up on the word, is, that's where we're at with that. I'm just, I wasn't here at the last meeting. So I am playing a little bit of catch-up on, just the thought there. Again, just the wording of sharing views and working for consensus. If you understand what consensus means, it is to have a common end goal and to have a unanimous vote. That's what the word consensus means. And so, to expect board members to reach a unanimous vote is what that word means, then I just have a problem with that.
I can get behind, "I will share my views," what were you saying? "Share my views respectfully"?
Yeah, like, "I will share my views respectfully."
"I will share my views and listen to others' views respectfully"? I could get behind that.
So this is a copy of local policy. So it would require updating the policy. And then, whatever is in the policy would be essentially copied into these operating procedures. So, no matter what we do with the operating procedures tonight, the words as they are would be there, but we could then make a change elsewhere that would then update this guideline. Okay, just making sure everybody understands where we're going with that. Okay, so, Krista, would you mind repeating the words that you recommended?
"I will share my views respectfully," "respectfully," sorry, long time. "respectfully and listen to others respectfully," in turn. Where are the English teachers? I'm good with something, yes.
Okay. All right, so, that was one of the points of concern. I think one of the others was the numbering associated with the goals. And again, if we look at those, another page number.
I had agreed that we should take the elementary out, which I'm seeing that is not in there. And that maybe we should take the numbers out, which they're now bulleted. I think those two have been addressed.
As far as I'm concerned, a more goal is a more goal. So, again, for concerns over that, let's talk that through. Kayla, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since you were the one who brought it up, I want to kind of close the loop to make sure you're, you've had an opportunity to review and provide any feedback here.
No, if the, if the word "elementary" was removed and the numbers are removed, then that is sufficient.
Good, all right. So, one of the next comments, and if I skip some, please hold me accountable there. One of the next comments was the subjectivity of disruptive to the meeting. So, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit of dialogue on that. And we see examples where people in the audience are having some dialogue, and yet it's not disrupting what we, the board, are trying to hold in our meeting. And yet, other times where somebody may speak loud enough or in a manner that does disrupt or overpower what we are trying to have dialogue on. So, I think trying to make that very, very prescriptive could be a pretty long list if that was to be objective there. So, again, looking for feedback. If you'd like to jump in.
Actually, I think we had, we had Ms. Miller spoke, and she said, you know, if we, with, with the First Amendment as a priority, but finding a ballot, she even referenced that, you know, the expectation of having decorum is certainly fair. So, you know, shout-outs from the crowd, disrupting. I feel like that's disruptive. That'd be a good definition. That's highly fine disruptive behavior. But, in terms of, you know, taking their time to speak, I mean, to talk about not having consensus here. I mean, I'm fine with whatever they have to say, but I don't live in a bother me. But, you know, I understand, I know respectfully, listen to everyone's other, every other one's idea respectfully. Did I say that right?
Sure.
Ms. Miller made a comment, and kind of, I wrote down while she was speaking, do we need to define disruptive behavior as something that disrupts the conduct of business at our meeting? You know, and it would, it would be outbursts, it would be loud conversations on the side. I mean, but we don't have to necessarily define specifics, but something that disrupts our business meeting. Because that's what this is.
Is it as simple as saying, like, I mean, there was a conversation that happened this evening when there was a presentation going on, and it drew my attention away from the presenter. So is it as simple as saying, you know, it is, the disruption is one of us has our attention pulled from the presentation? I'm just trying to give, like, a general, you know what I mean? If we're the ones up here that are being presented to, and, I mean, obviously, everybody here in attendance is trying to listen. But if it becomes such a distraction that up here, we can hear it, or, I don't know. Sorry.
So, of course, the first thing we would do is bring that behavior to the attention of the person. Because the last thing, we've never had to remove anyone from a board meeting. That's the last thing we want to do. So, we haven't, we haven't got to that, that point, because we've been, we've clearly communicated that it's happening. So, I mean, that's the, the best thing to do is just to communicate so we don't have to get to that point.
Yeah, and I don't mean for removal. I just mean if we're trying to, like, peg down specific behaviors, but we don't really want to spell out every single behavior, like, then that, to me, was like a general, if it draws the attention from, I don't know. Are you trying to say that if we were going to define it, that's how we would define it? Yes, maybe.
Is this a, something that, I hear multiple suggestions on how to reword. But I guess, Kayla, I'm going to come back to you, is that what you're hearing, is that something you think satisfies what you're looking for? Or is that something that you think would need to be even completely different?
So, my main area of concern is if you go to conduct during board meetings, under what is the board's response to public comments? Number five says, "The board may request someone removed from the boardroom if they are disruptive to the meeting." So, and that's in response to public comments. So if someone has a public comment and a board member thinks their comment was disruptive, they can have them removed from the meeting. That's just very subjective and very restrictive to free speech, that they have the right to say in their three minutes, and I've said this many, many times in these meetings, but they have the right to caustic, hateful, hurtful speech. They have that right. And for us to restrict that right, we're opening ourselves up to litigation. And if a member of the public did use caustic speech, and we had them removed from a meeting and they sued, they would win, and it would cost the district a lot of money. So I'm, I'm trying to avoid potential litigation with policies that restrict free speech. So that's my issue, is where it's located.
Yeah, so I understand, and the word "may" is very key in that sentence. We also have a very specific policy that outlines the steps that need to be followed before somebody can be removed. Again, addressing it, providing them a verbal warning. Again, I will probably miss one of those steps, so don't try to hold me to every one of those. But again, a verbal warning, a written warning, again, multiple warnings before somebody can just be removed from the facility here for disrupting a meeting. Yes, this goes to the extreme of "may" request somebody be removed, but we have steps before that. Are you, are you tracking those processes?
Yeah, I mean, I voice concerns with those policies as well. It's just not been on an agenda for me to be able to discuss those. So, because it's in this policy and procedure, so that's why I'm bringing it up.
Understood. So, any other questions or suggestions from other board members here?
I think, I think what you said in terms of speaking, to be able to say whatever, I mean, I agree with that. If you're, if you're signed up to speak and you're speaking, let's do a whole bar of all of West up there for all I care.
Right, well, and that's not what the policy is referring to, what they're saying. I mean, if they were sitting up here with a bulletin board and they're talking about, you know, a kindergarten, or name it, something like that, that's more what it's talking about. You know, it's not, I mean, if they're saying their opinion, that's, like you said, they're right free speech.
I don't think any of us here are wanting to not be criticized. And we're, I mean, we're open to criticism. And I think, this is just my interpretation, that if a student in the classroom in our ISD is going to be held to a standard of being respectful to the teacher in the classroom and the other students in the classroom, and they're not going to be allowed to get up and yell obscenities or be disrespectful to anyone in that room, I feel like we should hold that same level of decorum in our meetings because we are setting an example for our students. So I think decorum is not, and asking someone to not be disruptive is not saying, "Please don't criticize us," or, you know, anything like that. We're just saying, or, excuse me, asking for non-caustic verbiage. You can use caustic verbiage while still upholding a standard of decorum that you would expect our students in the classroom to use. That's kind of what I'd go back to.
I mean, caustic speech is defined as hurtful, critical, and intentionally unkind. So to require respect, civility, and- So to require respect, civility, and order, that in itself is a violation of free speech. I mean, yes, we would love for everyone to be respectful, but they don't have to be.
Do I have a suggestion on wording difference here?
I'm going to go back to expectation. It's kind of like Krista said, we expect a certain decorum, like you, a judge would expect decorum in a court of law. No, this is not a court of law, but this is a public setting with, could have children here, um, other families, um, and it's an expectation, not necessarily a requirement. I mean, we're not going to kick somebody out if they are, I mean, again, disruptive behavior would be, you know, somebody that's trying to do cartwheels across the front during the meeting, that's disruptive. Someone that's speaking out of turn loudly in the back, that's disruptive. But I go back to an expectation. I expect as an elected official, which I would think you would agree as an elected official, that you garner some respect. I certainly garner, feel like I garner respect from my constituents because I voted in this position. So I think it's an expectation, not just, you know, exactly a requirement we're saying, but I think we all expect some decorum in our meetings.
Okay, I'm, I'm not hearing a specific wording change here, so let's move on to one of the next items. There's a statement in here about recognizing individuals within the district or as stakeholders. So, um, obviously Godley receives funds from outside the district. State funds, obviously it comes from outside of the district boundaries. However, obviously, uh, if parents, um, if, if parents and business owners and such from our district, um, I would think would have a, a stronger say in what occurs in our district versus somebody that's, I don't know, up in South Texas, not a specific city in, in mind, um, that don't know anything about our district. They don't, they don't know anything whatsoever that because they pay sales tax in the state of Texas, therefore they get to tell us how we run the things in the district. That seems a little stretched in my mind, but again, um, that, that's one of the points of discussion here, so.
I, I mean, I don't mind the statement that we recognize students, parents, guardians, residents, but I would like to see struck that GISD does not recognize individuals who reside outside of the district boundaries and do not qualify as GISD stakeholders. Like I mentioned last meeting, we do receive half of our revenue from state sources. So any Texas taxpayer by definition is a stakeholder of Godley ISD because we receive half of our funding from Texas taxpayers.
I'm going to add that half, and I guess, Spencer, you maybe can confer on this, but when you say half of our funding comes from the state of Texas, that's money we've collected from our tax base and sent to the state of Texas that they are returning to us, not necessarily other taxing revenues from other parts of the state.
Yeah, so I did some, some study on this and so according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the annual survey of state and local government finances, the tax foundations, calculations, which is the world's leading independent tax policy, 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the Texas municipal data report for Godley ISD, there's the following data. The average Texas state and local collections per capita in the state of Texas is $4,822. Our most recent Texas municipal report listed Godley ISD's estimated 2025 population as 11,904. So if we extrapolate that out, that would be on a per capita total, Godley ISD residents pay about $57,401,000 in state and local taxes. How much does Godley ISD receive in state and local funding? Based on the 2425 budget, Godley ISD currently receives about $18,432,000 of state money and Godley receives about $14,557,000 of local property tax collections. That would mean on a per capita total, Godley ISD receives $32,989,000, which is well below the $57,400,000 on a per capita basis that we send to the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions or suggestions on that point? Okay, the next point, and again, Kayla, keep me straight if I'm missing something, was on a designated area for recording?
Am I missing where the designated area for recording is? That's our district camera. I'm Brian Hunt. Okay, so I'm going to go off of my memory. It's usually right up here in this front right corner, correct? Like, it's usually like where that first round table is closest to this pillar. Am I, am I wrong?
In that general.
Brian? No, you're okay. I just can't hear you.
Sorry, I was checking on staff member.
Okay. So our designated area for recording, is it usually this?
We usually have a sign, we couldn't find the sign tonight, but it's usually right over there at that first table and I try to get it where they have a clear shot of the podium.
And why do you pick there?
I, I've asked people in the past when they film it, is what's a clearer shot that wouldn't interfere with anybody's vision? And we thought over there would be good.
So it's not in front of anybody, it's close enough to pick up us on our mics and anybody presenting there, it's closer than our district camera, correct?
Yes, I guess I've measured it. That's where, that's where we usually put it.
The issue is the district camera is actually picking up our microphones. Someone that's recording from like a cell phone or a video, they're just picking up what's in the audience. And the way that the speakers face, it's really hard to hear their audio over there in that, from that area.
Why is the district video not sufficient for recording if it's a higher quality recording and it's being put online? I'm just asking, why is that not sufficient if we are providing that to the public?
There has been a few times where our live video has not worked or it has not been uploaded immediately. Um, there, it's rare occasions, but, but the public does have a right to video and to record.
Well, I agree, they do have the right and it seems like the district is trying to provide a place for that. I personally, again, can reference this evening where there was a phone facing directly at my face and I didn't love it. So, I mean, I appreciate having more of a designated area just for that purpose because, again, kind of a disruption to me when I'm trying to listen to the presenter. So just an opinion on it. I'm just, if we provide it to the public, I think a designated area to me doesn't seem that big of an issue.
I think the audio is the main issue.
I, I personally think that we've got a lot bigger fish to fry than worrying about where somebody's camera is. And that's just my opinion. I feel like we've got a lot bigger things to, to focus on than where somebody's camera in here is.
Just to give an example, last meeting, there was a gentleman that was sitting second row and he just had his phone in front of him. He wasn't being disruptive at all and Dr. Veer asked him to get up and move to record in another area and I just thought that was really unnecessary. He wasn't bothering anyone, um, so I just feel like it's really restrictive and there's not a reason for it. If someone just is holding up a phone, there's not an issue with that and they have the right to record. I don't think we should, I mean, it's just like requiring a member of the public to sit and stand in certain areas. It's just restrictive for no reason. There's just no reason for that, in my opinion.
Well, I think, um, in line of sit or stand in anywhere, I mean, I don't believe that we should have constituents all over the building. They should be in the general area at the board meeting if they're here for the board meeting. Otherwise, they shouldn't be up in the EUs or around, you know, outside of the general area. That to me is disruptive.
Am I good?
Thank you, Brian.
Be good for now. Thank you. You may get called again.
I mean, it does say may designate a specific recording area to allow free recording. It doesn't say they are required to be there.
I do like that because I feel like it kind of, it could give us priority over some of this, like front seating, we would put students here, it gives us the freedom, the ability to do that, right? Is that?
Accurate. Yeah, I mean, if we had 15 people there all sitting in front and students can't be front and center, that kind of gets the focus away from what we really should be about. I want to move on to the next particular topic. There's a number nine reference, I need to make sure which number nine. Okay, this is again, back to the disruption to the board meeting. Um, we've had, it's in a separate section, but I think we've kind of had that dialogue. Was there another specific point that you wanted to make here regarding how we, how disruptions are defined? This has a pretty extensive list.
The, the issue I have with it is the extensive list is really subjective. It's giving a lot of leeway for us to remove someone from a meeting willy-nilly and, I mean, that's just the issue I have. And if we did remove someone for some of these, um, issues here, I mean, like foul language, and I've said this before, people have been thrown out of meetings and arrested for cursing and they sued and they've won because they have a First Amendment right to curse. So, you know, that use of foul language there and audible utterances, what is that? That's really subjective. Disruptive behaviors, um, again, just the ability to remove someone from a, a meeting for these subjective, very broad areas, I just have issue with.
Well, since we never, we never removed anyone from a meeting, I, I can't say that we would never do whatever, but it's, it's laid out pretty plain in, in the penal code already, Title IX. I, I wouldn't see us removing anyone that didn't fit this, that's already been laid out by law, but again, I can't say that because we've never had to remove anyone.
I was going to add the same thing. We've never removed anybody from a meeting and I, I don't know that anybody's been close to be, being removed from a meeting.
Okay, so we've had that dialogue a couple of times. I want to move on to the last one and that's communicating with media.
So again, my issue, my issue with that is that here it's saying that a board member may not speak to the media and board members do have the First Amendment right to speak to the media. So I don't like, again, restricting free speech for board members either. We also have First Amendment rights, so that, I have issue with that.
I, I think the key is speaking on behalf of the board. I think that's the, the key difference of, of course, not any, any individual who must speak to the media, but if an individual went to the media or a media contacted them, regardless, speaking with the media in a capacity of the board or speaking for the board, and yet if that's not, um, coordinated position of the board, that could be, um, completeness, representation of the board. So I think that the key is not, let's pick on Craig. Craig going and talking to the media versus Craig Stevenson as the board president, speaking to the media. A big difference there. Whatever I'm, if I'm going as the board president and I need to be representing the board versus representing just Craig Stevenson's opinion.
Well, so, okay, I can see what you're saying with speaking on behalf of the board, but maybe that needs to be rewarded because a board member has a First Amendment right to speak on their personal opinion, but not on behalf of the board.
Absolutely. I'm trying to draw a very clear distinction, nothing infringing upon an individual's right to go speak to the media, but it's back to, is that person in their capacity speaking for the board or the district? That, that can be totally different. Again, picking on Craig. I may not be, again, today I'm in the president's role, but I may not be here always. So therefore I have to be careful of how my opinions are being presented as board context or Craig's context.
Number four clearly says this, board members may not speak in an official capacity or otherwise represent the views of the board. So I feel like that's already defined pretty clearly as to what you were saying, Craig. Is there another place in there that it's not defined clearly?
Well, just like number one and two is basically stating that you can't speak to the board, or you can't speak to the media unless the board president or superintendent gets you the authority to.
For issues relating to the district. Is the end of that sentence?
The last part of that sentence gives the context. Other concerns, questions, rewording suggestions?
Oh, there was just two things that were missed.
Okay.
The, the one in the pledge, so this board member pledge, you know, there's several, um, bullet points here. And I believe that this language, a lot of this language comes from Tena Bay and in my opinion, leads to taxation with their representation. There's a few things that I would like to see struck, um, and that is the, I will not criticize another board member or district employee. I just feel like that severely limits the freedom of speech of individual board members. And then also I will not embarrass fellow board members. It's just very subjective. And I feel like the respect for opinions of other board members, um, I will be open to disclose my opinions. I feel like the respect takes care of those, but to say I will not criticize or I will not embarrass is just really subjective and I feel like is an infringement on the, uh, right to speak our opinion.
I agree that the respect for the opinions of other board members kind of covers the embarrassment of board members, superintendent and staff. If we... If we include, "I will show respect for the opinions of other board members, superintendent and staff," is added to that first point. I can see how we can get rid of the embarrass.
I'd be good with that. So if we remove the criticize point and the embarrass point, and on point number one, if we just add in, "I will show respect for opinions of other board members, superintendent, and staff."
Any more comments regarding removal of the sentence, "I will not criticize the board members or district members"?
And the embarrass. So there's two points there.
Yep, correct. Yes, thank you. So just looking at it from the opposite side for just a moment, I think it does leave it fairly general to... I can still respectfully criticize an individual. And so that, in this case, I could also respectfully embarrass an individual. Board member, superintendent, staff, don't care. I can very respectfully rip somebody up one side and down the other, being very frank. So the real question is, is whether that's the behavior we must allow as a board member. Is that really something that... And "allow" is probably the wrong word. That we want, the behaviors we want to demonstrate is those kind of behaviors.
My issue is...
I'm going to key on the embarrass or criticize because I can do it very respectfully if I choose to.
My issue is someone, a board member's intention of sharing their opinion and doing so respectfully to another board member might be deemed embarrassing or criticizing, but that wasn't the intent. And so, I mean, that's kind of... I don't know, there's a lot of touchy-feely stuff here. But we have the right to our opinions. And especially when we're discussing very important items, we should be able to share those opinions. And so I feel like having the expectation of respect is sufficient without squandering the right to freely share your opinion.
Okay, I understand. I'm just trying to give an alternate point of view. So, okay, I have a couple of edits. Again, I have not heard major concerns over those two sentences being removed. Again, with the addition of superintendent and staff added to the first sentence.
I'm fine with the rule. I think it's all subjective. I could be embarrassed over something that doesn't embarrass somebody else. I could be... I could feel criticized over something that doesn't make somebody else feel that way. So same thing with the word "respect." My version of respect could be highly different from somebody else's version. So I think let's do it. Let's spend our time, like Jeff said, on maybe more important things. So let's move on from this, in my opinion.
So I'm going to summarize what I have written down.
Oh, there's just... Sorry, one thing that we missed.
Okay, sure.
It was the statement... I'm trying to find it here. Where it actually is documented. Okay, so again, this is under Public Comments, Board Meeting Protocols, and Rules of the Quorum. And it's the last paragraph. And I really would just like to see this paragraph struck entirely because it says that, "In today's politically charged, polarized, and divisive climate, as a district, we do not believe our students or school districts should be politicized or used to advance radical agendas." And so, in my opinion, all of this, we are the governmental body. And our meetings are board meetings. And they are public meetings. That is the business of the district. That is political by nature. And so to say that our board members, our board meetings should not be political, I mean, that's just... We are political because we are a governing body and we're doing business in the district. So I feel like this is appropriate for a school setting, but not for the business portion of a governmental body in our meetings. So I just take issue with that entire paragraph for a board meeting.
Any other feedback or comments?
I think I have an example of what she's referring to, though. There was some Title IX stuff that was on the verge of discussions, like on a federal level. You know, guys in girl sports and bathroom, you know, stuff that would... I feel like there was folks, and Kayla, and she... This topic was like on the forefront, wanting to be discussed. And we wanted to table it until it was brought to a state level, which it never did. It was never brought to a state level. It was squashed. I mean, it's never going to be brought to our district. And we, if had we brought such a polarizing political topic to the forefront of our district, that would have been useless, ind distraction, and irrelevant. So I mean, there is some... It does make some sense to have some sort of, you know, guidelines on what we're going to put on an agenda or what we're going to talk about in terms of polarizing political topics.
It took almost a year and a half for the federal government to strike the Title IX changes. There were many districts that were proactive. And again, this goes to being proactive and to protecting our students, protecting our females from males, biological males, being in their sports. So it was requiring us to be proactive while we waited on the state and the Attorney General to do their thing and the federal government to do their thing. And again, that took a year and a half. We could have been proactive like South Lake Carroll or other districts and had those discussions. So that's what that's about.
Respectfully. I have a daughter at the school. So, you know, that is a very, very valuable topic and relevant to me. So, I mean, just because we're not talking about it doesn't mean that it's important. I mean, I feel like it was premature, and obviously it was. But, I mean, just because we don't talk about it, we want to wait? That's, I wouldn't call that reactive. I would call that being prepared and assessing the situation and discussing when it could be potentially relevant versus irrelevant. So we don't have consensus.
No, it doesn't. I'll also add to that. I think part of that is knowing, call it Team of Eight, call it your fellow board members. Personally, I never had any thought, if that was presented to our district, that we wouldn't immediately come up with a plan to fight that. So to that point, I think some of that is the comfort with your fellow board members and knowing the conservatism and the things that we have as a board. Just to add to that.
Yeah, or distinguishing, you know, relevant to our district versus rhetoric.
All right, I heard a suggestion then to remove the entire paragraph. I also hear multiple comments about, I'm going to go extreme, leaving the paragraph alone with its context. So I... Unless there's other suggestions for rewording. Any other points that we may have missed? No? Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm going to walk through the points that I think we have... Do I use that word consensus or not? So in the board member pledge, adding to the first sentence, "I will show respect for the opinions of other board members, superintendent, and staff." And then remove the, "I will not criticize" sentence and "I will not embarrass" sentence. I also have note in the Board Member Code of Ethics, BBS Local, that there is a recommended change. Would not go into effect here. We would need to address that in our local that could then be reflected. So again, essentially, the wording would be left alone as it is. Okay, those are the two, the key changes I made notes of. We've had lots of discussion about other changes, potential changes, different points of view on things. So at this point, I'm going to close the workshop in its, and we'll go back to formal Robert's Rules for Operating. So at this point, consider approval for the Godley ISD Board Operating Procedures. Do I have a motion or not?
I'll make a motion to approve the board operating procedures with the changes indicated in the workshop.
I'll sit.
Have a motion by Terry and a second by Simone. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes sixty-one. Next on the agenda, consider nominating a replacement candidate for the replacement member from the Central Appraisal Board District of Johnson County.
Yes, sir. I spoke with the President of Johnson County... I spoke with Mr. Goulding, the President of Johnson County Appraisal Board, about the empty CAD board seat left by the untimely passing of Jim Cockrell. And I asked him what they were looking for in a candidate. And his exact words were, "A clone of Jim Cockrell." Because he went on to share that, and this was his view, that the CAD board was going to lean on Mr. Cockrell because he had experience, because he was a former administrator, he's got school experience. So he asked if we, and when I say we, I mean, school districts, could nominate someone like Mr. Cockrell that had school experience. So following Mr. Gould's request, Mr. Goulding's request, administration wants to nominate John Fennell for the vacant JCAT board position. Mr. Fennell's worked nationally to secure financial tax relief for property owners. And like he mentioned today, he spent a lot of time trying to reform school finance. So that is administration recommendation to nominate John Fennell.
May I ask for some clarification on... I think there might be some confusion that we are nominating someone to be considered by the seated CAD board and that they are actually going to decide who replaces...
That's what Mr. Goulding told me. He said the entities will nominate, and then the CAD board will vote. They'll use those nominations to decide who to fill in for. That's what Mr. Goulding told me.
Have either one of the gentlemen that were here already been nominated by any other entities?
Both.
Mr. Spinson, you've been nominated?
Both have.
Yeah, Cleaver nominated both tonight.
Can I just say, I worry about seven votes from the states and some of the counties. And why do you say seven?
So let's... We've had the multiple opportunities. Thank you, sir. So the question was, the current board will vote on who they want to replace, again, with multiple nominations?
So this will not be, it will not follow the same...
Will not.
Where we will come back next month and vote on the nominees. So this is just us nominating someone to be considered by the actual CAD board and that they will place the replacement. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a recommendation by the district. Consider a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Peter Spinson to the Johnson County CAD board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of second.
Can I make a motion, a statement before I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to speak to why I didn't support that. Not because of any personal anything against Mr. Spinson. I appreciate all his work and support in the community and all that. My reason for supporting Mr. Fennell, and how do we say his last name? It's because I feel like he is very similar to Mr. Cockrell. And I know that Krista and I both spoke about why we were so supportive of him when he was here. And I personally think, kind of like I've tried to use my internal teacher knowledge and background to help with the board. I see his school board experience and everything that he brings to the table as a good thing to try and like take what he can learn there with what he knows and maybe get us through this thing that we can't mesh together between school finance and property tax. So that's my personal reason. But I also trust that Mr. Spinson is going to continue. I know it's maybe not on a board seat. But I know he's not going to give up from participating. So this, to me, is almost kind of like the best of both worlds, essentially. So that's mine. Just want to make that statement. That's my reasoning. Oh, and I make a motion to nominate, or I don't know what I'm trying to say here. I make a motion to nominate Mr. Fennell as a replacement candidate for the current vacancy on the Central Appraisal District.
I'll sit.
I have a motion by Simone and a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that both men would be great on the CAD board, and they've both already been nominated, and it's not going to be our decision in the long run. It's going to be the CAD board's decision. So I wish both of them, and good luck. And I know that either one would be a great fit.
My concern with Fennell is, yes, he does have a lot of TASB experience, a lot of school experience, but he doesn't have any CAD board knowledge. Mr. Spinson has been attending CAD board meetings for years. He's studied the law. He understands the job and the role of a CAD board member where Mr. Fennell does not. And we are electing a CAD board member, so that knowledge is very critical. We're actually just nominating... Sorry, we're not naming.
So, you know, as it pertains, I mean, Mr. Spinson's been nothing but kind and respectful and professional every time he's here. But one thing he mentioned, and I just want to, you know, we've all had some opinions, and I'd like to share mine. One thing he mentioned when he was speaking is he said, "Instigated on your behalf." I wrote his words down. Instigated on your behalf. He was referring to the budget savings that he was involved in, instrumental in, on our behalf. Well, about six months ago, I faced a lot of heated questions about why Godley ISD was bankrupt and why we couldn't make bond payments and why we were financially in trouble. And it was because he instigated those questions on our behalf. So those were, that's a really good word that he chose to use, "instigated on your behalf." So when he stands up at a meeting and says that Godley is bankrupt and that we're costing Johnson County taxpayers too much money because we can't make our payments, I mean, obviously, that was a public statement, and it drew my opinion on where this vote should go.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Add several comments. Any further questions? All those in favor? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion passes six to one. Next, we will consider Agenda Item Number 9F, approving joint contracts for election.
For the election code, ISD has to contract with the counties. So we have Johnson and Hood right now. Tarrant County has not sent their contract in, but will do so shortly after they have all the information from their entities.
Are we making a motion?
Consider a motion.
I make... I don't have any more questions.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the joint election contracts with Johnson and Hood Counties as presented and recommended and give Craig Stevenson the authority to sign and approve the Tarrant County joint election contract. We proceed.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Simone and a second by Marissa. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And Agenda Item 9G.
Good evening again. So this is bringing a resolution to you similar to what we did last month when we had to close for bad weather inclement days. This one is for the days that we decided to close down due to staff absences, student absences and the illnesses. And Jeff made a great point last meeting where we have to come each time with different resolutions because there are different items. And so this resolution is essentially for the days of January 29th through the 31st of this year to pay those individuals that were told to stay home.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to pay non-exempt employees for closed illness stays as presented and recommended.
Second. I have a motion by Krista and a second by Jeff. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. The time is 8:56. The Board will go into closed session to specific topics. Section 551.072, discussing purchase, exchange, lease for value real property. 551.074, discuss personnel or to hear complaints against personnel.
All right, we are going to reconvene in open session at 9:58.
I motion to adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned, 9:58.